The toffee was delicious, by the way. It lasted about two seconds in my household.
Excellent.
Okay, so let's call the meeting to order at six thirty one. This is a special meeting of the Winchester Board of Education. We're meeting as the Finance Committee to discuss the upcoming year budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mel or Nancy or Seamus, whoever is gonna talk about some nice topics.
So I'm gonna share my screen if you don't mind, and I'm gonna try to do a split screen. So just give me a second.
Do we have to do a roll call?
Oh, yeah, we do. Let's do that first.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. Let's do the roll. I'll begin Doug Fenniger.
Nora McCorsky.
I'm just. Uh oh. We have to do it in alphabetical order.
Top to bottom, everybody.
All right, Sandra Strubar, I'm on right there.
Cheryl McGlynn.
Kristen Peterson.
Renee Waldron.
Jeanette Broder.
Melanie Brady Shanley.
Okay, so I guess we're still missing Cheryl and Doc.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen right now. Can you guys see that? Okay, so Nancy and I have just updated the budget calendar. As you can see, so the big things that we have coming up in front of us are tonight, we're doing the first initial meeting. Then we will have a budget review at the Finance Committee at the end of the month. We'll do a regular budget update in February, another workshop to be able to finalize anything, and then we'll do a final presentation based upon all the feedback that we receive up to that point. Are there any questions about that?
I was gonna say, the only two dates that were changed, the only two things that were changed on the calendar were the two dates that you chose at the last meeting to have workshops.
And I know there was a couple people that had asked questions about February. I have not sent February's invites out. I'm waiting to see what the COVID numbers do, whether or not we're in person or virtual, but you do have the calendar to be able to help guide yourself for your meetings.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on the calendar? No. The next piece would be our enrollment. And.
And that was simply updated for the December actual numbers. Everything else remains static.
Let me just. Hold on, I gotta be able to flip this, and I'm looking for my flip button. It's gonna do this to me right now, isn't it? All right, hold on.
About hitting that view?
It's not because I don't subscribe to it. All right, just give me one second. I'm gonna do this a little bit differently. Sorry, guys, thought I had beat the system last time. I did not beat the system.
If Doc appears, make sure that Barb knows it.
Give me one second, guys. I'm sorry.
What am I trying to do?
Trying to get the budget meeting materials. That's not showing up right now.
Can we just go off the paper? The hard copy?
We can. I prefer that we had them visually for people, though.
Not letting you share?
It's not letting me to pull them up from.
Says the host disable participant screen sharing.
Hello, everybody. Finally figured it out. Sorry.
Oh, no wonder, because you're off in space there.
All right, so we're gonna have to just go with a little bit of sideways budget presentation for the moment, but you have your hard copies, correct?
Yes.
Hey, Tori, you might want to change your name. It says Ali Williams because it's being recorded.
Oh, man, how do I do that?
You scroll to the upper of your picture, scroll to the upper right corner of your picture. There's some dots there. Click down, click on it, and then go click roll down to to name, rename.
Okay.
So Nancy, note to self.
Yes.
No more sideways scanning in. They have to go in the other way.
Some of these numbers are gonna be really, really spushed together, though.
So, well, we have to scan them differently, so.
We'll figure it out.
So I'm gonna leave this up here for those of you that don't. Does everyone have a hard copy?
Well, it lets you turn it. If you go up onto the view, it'll let you turn it now. Rotate.
No, not that one. The other, the menu bar, upper left-hand corner.
Upper menu bar up here.
Yeah, view.
Rotate view.
Sorry about that, guys. All right, so looking at the projections, Nancy, do you want to update the group on what projections have been updated on here?
So what the way that the workbook is set up, it's a push-up model. And so when I drop in the current month amounts that we're getting for enrollment numbers, they would go into the line that's just above the thick blue bar that says projection, because that's the current school year that we're in. And then what happens is there's a flow that goes on a diagonal. So, for example, the hundred and four students that we currently have in kindergarten, if you look to the column that says one for grade one, you'll see the hundred and four students are in the row below the thick blue column, and then they continue to flow through as they go from grade to grade to grade. And so that's all that it was, was updating for our current enrollment.
Is the one, is the eighty-four kindergarten population, is that based on pre-K plus other data?
Yeah. Rosie speak to that in a little bit. So that data right now, what that is inclusive of is Head Start, School Readiness, Winstead Area Childcare, and our current pre-K program, the known children, and then it's also inclusive of tax record data that we have been able to verify students being in town. Rosie, did I leave anything out on that verification number?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
So this time.
Those are eighty-four verified students that we are one hundred percent expecting to enroll.
And this time last year, how many kindergarteners were we expecting when we ended up with one oh four? Does anybody remember that? Was it a big bump, or were we kind of expecting it to be around there?
It was around, I'm gonna say seventy-two, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Seventy-two?
Yeah, last year.
And we ended up with.
We had that huge increase.
Over the summer.
Interesting.
Does anyone else have any questions on this enrollment chart? No? Okay. Let me scroll down. So these are the expected resources for next year. I'm gonna have Nancy go into detail regarding this particular chart and how to interpret this.
So the resources that we have are our town appropriated budget, and it gives a year-to-year comparison of what we're expecting. The the third, the middle column of the numbers is the one that really talks about the, what we're expecting, what we got in twenty-two, and then to the right of that is the twenty-three budget assumption that we're building the budget utilizing at this time. And then the next line are our federal grants. Those include the IDEA grants, the Title I grants, the rock-solid grants that we get year-to-year, Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV. Then we have our Medicaid reimbursement that we're expecting at sixty thousand. It has fallen off again in twenty-two as the COVID numbers have messed up the services, the service providers being able to provide services to our students, and therefore we can't be reimbursed for them because unable to do the services.
Hold on, can everybody mute except Nancy?
Somebody's not muted.
Melanie, can you mute everybody except Nancy? Now I can't hear anybody.
Well, you're not muted because I can hear you.
Well, yeah, I guess we're good, Nancy.
Okay, so I was talking about Medicaid that in many cases, services can't be provided to certain students because of COVID, the types of services, and so we can't ask to be reimbursed for those services. So that's why that number is decreased, and seventy-five thousand dollars you will see in the next budget report tomorrow night, that the seventy-five thousand dollars up, I'll be talking about that going down too. The Commissioner's Network Grant is done. The Alliance Grant has been rock-solid every year at two hundred thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars, and we're happy for it. It's a state grant. Then other state and local grants are, make up the billion eighty-three thousand dollars. Our two percent non-lapsing fund, we are trying not to show that we would be utilizing that for this upcoming year. But we're still working on on not utilizing it. So we're working the numbers, Mel and I. Then the Town Support for Education, we're assuming that that will remain the same. We had a nice bump in twenty-two, so we did not expect to be asking for any more from the town in twenty-three. And then the Champs After-School Program, that's the last piece of it, and that's the the tuitions and such that the Champs Program collects and then turns around and puts back into the community for the students. So that gives us a total of twenty-three thousand, twenty-three million fifty-five thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars in funds to spend. And we've got a small decrease, two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars from what we anticipated to have to spend in twenty-twenty-two, but remember, that was also inclusive of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of the non-lapsing fund, which we're trying so hard not to touch. Questions?
So that I understand this, is this the ask, or is this if nothing changes, like there's no increase from the, like, flat budget, zero percent?
Oh, Nora, this is what we're going in as an assumption. This is our base amount. So we are looking to try to stay within these amounts. If we needed to go over, that's where an increase would come from. If we needed to go under, that's where a decrease would come from. But these are the funds that we can reliably use to begin our budget conversations with.
I see. Gotcha.
Question?
Yep.
Nancy, on the Medicaid, if our reimbursement goes down by fifteen thousand, it's safe to assume that our expense goes down by a similar amount?
Uh, no, because the reimbursement is for services that in some cases we're contracting. So yes, in that case, the services would go down, but a big chunk of it is for services that our employees, our social workers, our psychologists, our occupational therapists provide to students, and we can actually reimburse for their wage and benefit amounts.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions on resources? Anything to clarify? No?
Yep, I just wanted to ask a quick question. So for social workers and OT and psychologists for the school, we're only spending sixty thousand dollars a year?
No, under Medicaid.
I was gonna say, that seems kind of, okay.
No, so that's.
Just reimbursed the sixty thousand.
Projected resources, because of the services they provide to students, we're actually able to bill Medicaid for those services. So this is money we're receiving from Medicaid to be able to support those students receiving service in the school.
And are those employees then on a separate line item in the budget?
Yes, there are salary budgets, just as all of our salary, all of our employees are in the wages category. None of them will fall in the resources. Their money that we spend money on, not money that we receive.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on here? No, I can't see all of you, so if you do have a question, I can't tell if your hand is up or not, so just shout out. Okay. We can always come back to it if you have a question. The next chart I want to walk you through. This is a chart that you see on a yearly basis, and it's our class size ratio report, which takes the number of students that we're projecting on a yearly basis by grade level, the number of teachers we need, and whether or not that meets our contractual obligation that's in the teacher's contract. Excuse me, apologize. So looking at this, we're gonna start at the top here. So for kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, we are anticipating that the grade level enrollment will be seventy-two students. We know that we will need four pre-K teachers for that. We will assume that there's going to be eighteen kids per classroom based upon that number. The class size guidelines for the teacher contract is eighteen, and it currently meets those guidelines, so we're not expecting to have any other financial changes need to occur at that grade level.
How many do we have? How many do we have this year in pre-K?
For about, there's thirty.
Forty-four. It's on the enrollment report.
Yeah, let me go back.
Forty-three?
Forty-three.
So that's a big jump.
It is because we only have three teachers right now because we closed that classroom at the beginning of the school year because of COVID.
So you would have had.
We collapsed the classroom, yeah.
What did that mean when you closed the classroom? Did that mean you had to disenroll kids?
No, that meant that because of COVID, we had a large percentage of families that because pre-K was not required, that elected to keep their kiddos home. That was unexpected.
Okay. So we've never had seventy-two in pre-K in the past, though, right?
We've had up to fifty-some. So what we're finding, though, and Seamus might be able to speak to this a little bit more clearly, is that we're getting students in the Birth to Three program that have special education needs that will then enroll, like, in the middle of the year. So we need to have extra space for those kids, so we're kind of taking into account some of those mid-year enrollments that we are required by law to service.
And we have space for them. We will.
We will have, this builds in the space for those children, and Seamus, if you want to come off mute and speak to that a little more, you're welcome to.
Yeah, Mel, you're a hundred percent correct, so we have to. Doug, there's no choice. We have to provide services if students identified and aging in and they need services. We have to provide those services. We actually got to the point last year where we, in order to make our program run appropriately, there has to be at least fifty-fifty split of regular education students and special education students as well, too. So there were some students that we had to provide interim services to, either through either through the daycare setting or some of the other settings that we have to provide services on top of our pre-K program as well, too. So we absolutely do need to have spots available. We do work in and here with Birth to Three. Birth to Three provides us with numbers previous. We have what we call transition meetings, so we're aware of these things at least ninety days prior to a student starting, so we're able to secure spots, have really good open communication. If a student moves into town, we don't have any, any knowledge of that until they get here, but most of the time, we have a really good relationship with Birth to Three. We know what's coming, and those are built into our projections for our program.
Thank you.
So I want to skip kindergarten and grade one for a minute, and I want to come back to them because I want to go to the other grades just because there's no changes represented there. So we are seeing and expecting consistency a lot through sixth grade, so second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, we're expecting consistency. Expected normal class size is as we've always had at all of those grades. We also are currently projecting to meet all of the current class size guidelines. Do you have any questions on grades two to six before I talk about kindergarten and first grade?
What are the contractual maximum students in those grades two through six?
Yep, so if you look in the middle of your chart, it says guidelines, those are the guidelines.
Okay, so if we have, for instance, twenty-four contractually allowed on grade three, you could conceivably have only three teachers in that class that you had to, right? That class age group?
There's sixty-five of them. By three, yeah, twenty-one.
So I know I'm getting ahead of you here, but if kindergarten or grade one gave you a surprise you hadn't budgeted for, do we have the flexibility of moving staff around to cover that?
Though, I will be honest with you, Doug, it would be difficult at grade three through six to make those changes because of how those classes are structured. In many cases, those classrooms, there are certain teachers that teach mathematics and science, and then the other half of the teachers teach reading, writing. So that would be a little bit more of a difficult pool because it would have an uneven, you know, you might have one teacher teaching math and then have two. We need to have equal numbers of teachers teaching math, science, reading, writing.
I understand. Thank you.
Um. So the conversation for the board, and I, we really need some direction on this tonight from the board in the way that you'd like us to proceed forward. We are right now projecting eighty-four students coming into the kindergarten class. That would mean that we have to have a discussion and a decision around, do we want to have four or five teachers at that grade level? So what we've put in front of you is if you go with four teachers in the grade level, there's gonna be twenty-one kids in a classroom. If you go with five kids and a class, five teachers, there's going to be seventeen. The contractual guidelines for the contractor, eighteen. So if you go with the four teachers, you are not currently meeting contractual obligations. If you go with the five, you are. Now, in the WEA contract, there is language in there that allows for class size overages, so meaning the number of students above eighteen, the teacher that has them would be compensated for those extra students above eighteen. So what Nancy has done here, we wanted to give you some comparison factors here. So the financial hit, if you stay with four, and we would need to do class size overage projections, would be about forty-five thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty-five to be able to support paying the teachers extra for the extra kids in the classroom. The other number, and Nancy, I'm gonna assume that's with fringe benefits, the sixty-eight-nine?
Yes.
Okay, so the other side of that is what a teacher would cost on average for a fifth teacher with fringe benefits. So we normally say that the average salary is gonna be fifty-three thousand dollars, like a middle-of-the-road teacher, and then the fringe benefits on top of that would bring it up to sixty-eight. So we wanted to have a discussion with the board on how they would like us to proceed with either four or five teachers for kindergarten, and that same discussion for first grade, but I want to have the first, the discussion around kindergarten first.
I can ask a question. So the forty-five, I'm jumping ahead probably, but the forty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-five is because there would be potentially three more students, so it's per student that the contract calls for an increase in payment?
That is correct.
Okay. Whereas in first grade, we're showing we'd have an overage of one student per the contractor, it would be just sixteen thousand for increase instead of getting another teacher.
Correct.
Okay, so just one other question. Kindergarten seems to be, to me, mean you really need lower class sizes to have the kids get the most, the best start. Is that a fair statement academically?
I would argue, Cheryl, kindergarten, first and second grade, they really need to have manageable numbers. It's where, it's the foundation for everything that they need to know and be able to do going forward.
So having three extra students in kindergarten versus one extra in a first-grade class, there's a distinction?
A hundred percent, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Your numbers include pairs. What would happen if you have an extra class? Would you need an extra pair or somebody in that classroom as well?
It depends on the student, but right now that would not be the, we're not including extra pairs right now, but it would be more driven by what the particular student need is.
Just have a small question. I'm working the math. It's fifteen thousand for the kindergarten teacher per student, and the other for grade one is sixteen thousand. Is it just because of the teacher's wage?
Yes, there is a difference in seniority and years of service.
Okay.
Nancy went down to the particulars around years of service.
All right.
If we went with the additional staff, would we have classrooms for them?
Yes.
Is one of the reasons why?
Jeanette, you're muted.
Sorry. Is one of the reasons why the contract is for those larger sizes as the class, as the, as the class grades go up, is that why they initially set their contract with a lower number because students get more out of having smaller sizes at those younger ages?
Absolutely, and we found if you were to have twenty-four kindergartners in a classroom, it makes instruction very difficult and very challenging because we know how important individualized instruction is at such a young age. We try to keep those class sizes manageable.
Melanie, do these classes have a full-time assistant, the kindergartens?
No, the kindergarten staff has three teacher assistants that's rotated throughout the day to the classroom. So right now, there's five teachers and three assistants that are rotated throughout the day. And then we do have a few paraprofessionals, but they're assigned to special education students.
So if they were to have eighteen or, or, sorry, twenty-one, they could conceivably be alone at partial times during the day with twenty-one kids?
They would be, yes.
Okay, and then my other question is, can you just clarify what fringe benefits are for us noobs?
Yeah, so that would be your health insurance, your dental benefits, your paid time off, your work-life insurance, work and compensation, all of the, you know, kind of behind the wages, things that get paid out that sometimes people forget are actual perks to the job.
Right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if I do the math correct, and I just add forty-five plus sixteen thousand, that's sixty-two thousand. If I add sixty-eight and sixty-eight, thinking one teacher for kindergarten, one teacher for grade one, that'd be a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Am I doing it right in my head? Is that okay to do that?
Yeah. So the difference between the two is about, what, eighty-five?
Well, let me do my math, the calculator.
Yep. You got it, Doug.
So to max out or to do the maximum staffing, it would cost us eighty-five thousand dollars more.
But then you would be hiring a teacher and then letting go a teacher because you got seventy-two kids behind it coming into kindergarten a year after.
That's just our preschool program, though.
You'd expect that number to go, to rise.
We usually just budget for a seventy-two for the pre-K class when it comes to this, because. Because we don't know what that is gonna grow to whenever they get to kindergarten. We've just found that on average over the years, typically there is four enough for four, four teachers. However, that's been. Different these past couple of years.
I mean, your projection um is for next year for kindergarten for twenty-three, twenty-four year to be eighty-seven students in kindergarten. That's the projection. And that's just, that, that's just statistical projection. Covid has, has kind of done a number on straight statistical projections at this point, I have to say. With the huge influx of people we had last summer, so um. We'll see if that actually pans out that way.
So if I may, I would. Instructionally, I'd like to suggest to the board that you please consider, I would. Find leaving five teachers in grade one to be acceptable. And something that we can um. Handle. What I'd like to suggest the board do is that we potentially plan to hire a kindergarten teacher. At the sixty-eight marker. However, we would agree that we would hold off on hiring that until closer to like late April, early May. So that way, we can ensure that the numbers are coming in the way that we're projecting those numbers to come in in terms of classroom enrollment.
I think that's a good idea, but we need to budget for that fifth teacher in kindergarten.
And then it would be, you know, a savings if, if we wouldn't have to produce it, but right now it is looking like we would need to produce it. Which is the same practice that we did when we had the kindergarten enrollment increases, we waited a little bit and did the increase. Once we were certain of what the class size numbers were going to actually be.
This is a bubble. This is a bubble going through, I mean, eventually this bubble will make, met, will matriculate upwards, right?
Yeah.
But behind it, can you go back to the enrollment page, it talks about the seventy-two versus the forty-three before it? Can you help me understand why you would go from a projection of to seventy-two? That's a difference of a lot, twenty kids or so?
Because we've had historically a waiting list. In this past school year with covid for the past two years. We weren't able to fully run those pre-K classrooms and you're speaking to pre-K, correct Nora?
Yeah.
So we weren't able to fully put those students at capacity because of. Couple of things, um the social distancing in those classrooms, those classrooms are pretty small. Two, we had some enrollment issues with parents after the fact not feeling comfortable sending pre-K in when it wasn't required. And three, a lot of those little people have to be um worked with in order to be mask compliant and to be into school. So that kind of has put a hindrance on that a little bit, but. Pre-Covid, we were up to forty-nine students. And that was with the three classrooms and we had a waitlist at that point, so we're anticipating that as we move forward. We're probably gonna get right back to that spot.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you.
So Melanie, I, I understand your advice, I wonder if Rosie has any thoughts on. The higher class size for grade one, knowing what those kindergarten, kindergartners are now. Do they, does that pose any particular problems for you to have a larger size in that group?
I would agree. I would agree with what Mel is saying, um we know the kindergarten class right now that would be matriculating up to first grade. And there are some needs in that grade level that right now we are managing with the five teachers and the three TAs. Um along with, you know, the paraprofessionals, but there is a strong need in that grade level. Um instructionally, I think it would benefit um as Mel was saying to. Um have smaller class sizes in order to meet individualized student needs um in first grade as well, just knowing who the students are individually. And the class makeups this year.
And just to have the board be mindful is that those three assistants do not travel with up to that first grade. That would be independent first grade teachers teaching those children, the assistants maintain themselves in kindergarten.
Sorry.
It's right, um if we, for example, kept the four and the five at the minimum. For budgetary reasons, what would be the tipping where we would have to have another teacher?
Which grade level are you talking about, Chris?
Both, both K and one.
For me. Having more than twenty-one kids in either one of those classrooms would be close to tipping for me. I would really put that as the absolute maximum. Because they are so young and they do need so much guidance and attention, especially post-Covid. You know, we're seeing students that are coming in with very little social skills, very little. Peer interactions that they've carried over the past two years. We're really having to back up the work that we're doing. And teach basic socialization skills on top of basic academic for these students. It's very different than what we've dealt with in the past.
If even a handful of students came in in either kindergarten or grade one, it would throw everything off.
Absolutely, I would be coming to the board and seeking assistance.
Is there already money to cover that additional teacher? Within the budget or can it just be found in the budget, how do you?
So Nancy and I, based upon what you guys direct us to do tonight. Will go back in the next budget meeting, we will put a number in front of you guys, so we're gonna try to whittle that number down as close to zero as we possibly can get it. And then we'll bring that discussion to you guys, and then that's where the board would further discuss, do we need to cut this, do we need to add stuff, what happens?
So just to cover it.
So this is more of a planning meeting tonight where we're getting the direction from the board on some of the things that we need further guidance on.
So I would, I would say, sorry, I don't know who I just cut off, but I would say as. Twenty-one five-year-olds in a class, that would be, I would, I would support having an extra teacher. Because I think, I think twenty-one five-year-olds. And at times alone, with just one person in the room would be challenging. My two cents.
Thank you.
So if we hired one teacher, say for kindergarten, then that teacher is pretty flexible. And being able to like go up with the grades as that like bubble group or whatever goes up with the grades as well, right?
That is correct, we could absolutely have that teacher move around. Most of our teachers have a K-six certification, some of them have a K, a pre-K-three, but most are K-six. So we can move them around in those grade levels.
So then that would be beneficial to hire somebody with a K-six.
Yes.
I understand your answer to my earlier question about the flexibility of staff moving from grade to grade and the way that you structured the higher grades. But I'm struck by the discrepancy when you look at grade three or four, we have sixteen or seventeen kids in the class. And now we're struggling with potentially having twenty-one. You know, the best of all worlds, we'd have sixteen in every class, so. I guess as we get deeper into the budget, maybe we're gonna have to make some of these decisions, but if you take the two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars that were. Under for resources going into the year and add the eighty-five thousand for, for different some of these two teachers. We're already looking at three hundred and forty thousand dollars if we have to find somewhere else in the budget if we wanna stay flat. Just a comment, no, no answer required.
Doug, the one thing I would caution you guys against tonight is jumping on, on those numbers in terms of deficit versus. You know, projections, because what we don't know yet is how the other um line items and object codes are gonna come in. And that's the stuff that we're trying to work on with you guys tonight, to be able to see where we can incur some savings and some other lines. And where we need to do some increases and some other lines.
So tonight, are you looking for a direction as to whether you should be looking for an additional twenty-three or eighty-five thousand dollars in the budget?
What I'm looking for for tonight is, do you want me to budget for four or five kindergarten teachers or five or six grade one teachers?
Can I just jump off what Doug was saying? And I know you might have said this before, but if, do you have a K-through six teacher who you could take out of one of, potentially out of one of the classrooms? Out of perhaps the fourth or the fifth that you could move into to take care of the extra?
Not really, and then the other thing, just to caution you guys, so because those grades have to have two math and two reading, we can't really do that in four, five or six. Third grade is still homeroom-based, so that could be a discussion area, but I do wanna caution you guys about. Third through sixth grade are our testing grades. And we want to make sure that we have. One, experienced staff members in those grade levels, and two, we have optimal teaching going on in those grade levels. Because those are where our accountability numbers come from, so I just want you to be mindful of. If you go from, you know, sixteen kids to twenty-one third graders in a classroom, that may have an impact. And I'm not saying it will, but it may have an impact on how those students respond instructionally. So that's just something else to consider and keep in the back of your mind at this time.
Well, it seems to me this is what maybe people are forgetting is this is your, your, what, what'd you say, ground-up budget? Where you're talking about providing your basics first and then adding in everything else. Yeah, that's the goal, that's what you're doing, so you're starting with, these are the key, most important things, we need to focus on those first. And then we'll fill in everything else.
I support Melanie's recommendation, that is five at kindergarten. And uh stay with five at grade one.
Is that, are you making a motion, Nora?
Oh, I don't know if we, is this motionable?
I don't think we're at that level, I think she's looking for a consensus from the board.
I thought we were discussing.
Well, seeing how as.
Yeah.
He, this kindergarten is the only eighty-four students as they move along, I realize that you would want maybe a five when they're in kindergarten. But if we are bringing another teacher on, can we make sure that this teacher can go? K through six?
Absolutely, and it's pretty odd to have a teacher just have a pre-K grade three certification anymore. So the most prevalent certification is the, the K to six.
Yes, okay, thank you.
I guess just to move things along, I would, I would go along with your recommendation, Melanie, but I would. Reserve the possibility that when we revisit this discussion, if the numbers change.
Absolutely, hundred percent. So right now the board's directing Nancy and I to plan for five in kindergarten and five in first grade. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you guys. Alright, so going into the next sheet, are there any other questions on the class size one before we move on? And remember, I can't see your hands, so just shout out if you need to. Okay. We can always visit it again if we, you want to. Alright, so this can be a little bit of an overwhelming um sheet to be able to look at. What you're looking at though is all of the positions in the district, now this is gonna change based upon. Our previous conversation around the five and the five now. So I'm gonna start with this here, you've got some historical information from twenty-one, twenty-two, which is this school year. Of how many people we have staffed and in what positions, then what we are projecting to need for twenty-two, twenty-three. Then you have an F T E, which is your full-time equivalent change column. You have the projected enrollment that those individuals would be impacting. You have the ratios, which are gonna change in some cases based upon our previous conversations. The total for twenty-two, twenty-threes, and then on the far right-hand side, you have the F T Es. And what portion is being covered in their salaries from grants? So. Do you understand all of the columns or?
Yes.
Any questions on the columns?
Yeah, what is in a uh instructional coach?
So we'll go down through all of these and I'll kind of give you a brief overview of the particular positions, would that be helpful?
Yes, thank you.
So. For administrators, these are our principals, our assistant principals. We have um. Seamus, Cassandra, Nancy. I think I'm in that category. So these are our administrators in the district, so there's a total of eight of them between central office and the schools. We have the pre-kindergarten teachers, the kindergarten teachers, grade one through six teachers, any questions on those so far?
The numbers, I have questions on current, but we'll get back to that.
So let's just go over the positions though first, then I'll come back to the numbers, does that sound fair? So then we have remedial reading and these are two teachers that are specially trained to deal with students that have reading disabilities. And run small group reading instruction. Library media specialist, we have two art teachers, two music teachers, two health and P E teachers. Then we have three instructional coaches, so these are the individuals that work on a daily basis with training our staff and being in the classroom. Doing literacy coaching, we have S- STEAM coaching, science, technology, engineering, arts and math coaching. And then we have an inclusion specialist who works with our special education and service provider teachers to make sure that they're implementing the I E Ps correctly. We have special education teachers, an E L L teacher is someone who works with students that have um English as a second language. Or um maybe multilingual individuals in the house. Speech and language pathologists work with students that have um language disorders. Uh psychologist, we have one, social workers, we have three currently, four potential. Guidance counselor, we have one, so those are our certified, I'm gonna start there, okay? So looking at the change columns, most of this information stays the same. We have what will be some changes around the kindergarten and first grade area based upon our previous conversations, so we'll adjust those numbers. We have no changes until you get down to the speech and language pathologist line. We typically carry three speech and language pathologists, however, because of the shortness of being able to obtain them. There's very few certified qualified individuals out there. We're down to two right now in the district, but we'd like to be able to go up to three because those two pathologists right now are serving a hundred and forty-eight students. And that's a gigantic caseload, so ideally we should have three, so we're planning on that increase. Does anyone have any questions on the student or the certified staffing numbers?
Are these differentiated between full-time and part-time, is, am I missing a column or?
These are all full-time.
All full-time?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on them?
No, I'm good, I'm, I'm good, I'm just looking at your numbers from the previous page, I'm just trying to. Track where we went, so pre-kindergarten, there were three, but you'd like to go to four for next year, and our question was, do you go to four to five? And we've just discussed five.
Yes.
Okay, and then grade one, we're at four, and then we were discussing five or six, and we've decided to work with five. Gotcha, okay.
So we'll update this sheet for you based upon your feedback.
And pre-kindergarten is at three and you wanna go to four next year. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on certified? No, okay. So now we get into our non-certified, can everyone see that, okay? Yes?
Yes.
Alright, so we have um. Seven point two clerical staff, and I want to just say that's. There's two part-time individuals in that, but because we do FTEs. When you do an FTE, you're really basing it off of point two. Point five, point eight, point six, point seven, so it's the points of how many days those individuals work. So if they work two days a week, they would be a point four. If they worked four days a week, they would be a point eight, and so on. Does that make sense? So we have seven point two clerical staff and no changes there. We have two speech and language pathology assistants, which provide direct service to students in partnership with the speech and language pathologist. We have two of those, no increase. We have seven interventionists right now. We're planning on keeping seven interventionists, because many of those interventionists are paid for out of the S R and R plans. So those will go away when those funds go away. We have thirty-six paraprofessionals, which we are planning on maintaining. We are budgetarily going from four kindergarten assistants down to three. Because we started the year off with four, but we came down to three throughout the year. So that's actually, looks like a decrease on paper. We have one building substitute that we are decreasing, because we'll be closing Oak Street. So we'll still need one at Gilbert, Pearson, and Hinsdale for next year. We have one community partnership quarter, that's Teresa Payden, who also does champs. We have our part-time champ staff, which run our after-school programs, staying the same. Family resource center staffing staying the same. Our nurse will go down to two nurses, not three, because again, we're closing Oak Street, so we'll have just two nurses. Occupational therapist stays the same at one. Accounting staff stays the same at two. IT and data staff stay the same at one point eight. Custodians maintained at six, and maintenance maintained at one. So overall, there is a zero change, if you look at it completely. Overall, and we have a hundred and fifty-four point nine positions in the district. And twenty point four full-time equivalents that are serviced in part by grant funding.
What's the difference between custodial and maintenance?
So custodial do the general cleaning duties on a daily basis. Maintenance does mechanical, small fixes, coordination with outside services. Vendors that might need to come in and service different things, so he does more hands-on maintenance and fixing of things.
Melanie, what is an interventionist? What are their duties?
Interventionist works usually with one or two grade levels. Typically in either literacy or mathematics. And they work directly with small group instruction for students who are behind. In literacy or mathematics, and they provide support to them to be able to gain the skills necessary to reach grade level. In some, in some aspects, these also play a strong role in special education. In that, you know, students that are behind grade level can sometimes be referred to special education. We use an interventionist to be able to provide those students with small group instruction. And skills, so that they don't end up having to need to go into special education. We can fill their academic gap before needing to enroll in such a heavy program.
And then do they work with the paraprofessionals, or how does that work?
No, they actually work with our remedial reading specialists. And they work in partnership with parents and the classroom teacher to be able to track probably four to five times a week on average. The student's progress, so those students meet independently in either a small group or by themselves. With the interventionist, they get service, that service is tracked and the data is recorded. And we use that data to identify if the student is making progress or not making progress.
I have a quick question. So the overall is not zero now, it's just plus one? Given our discussion?
Yes.
Yeah. And the other thing I had, I missed it. Why were, why is the proposal to go down one kindergarten assistant?
We currently are operating, Nora, with three kindergarten assistants. Hi, Kitty Kitty. We're currently operating with three kindergarten assistants, and we have a good rotation going on between the three. Teachers and the five classrooms. So I think we can maintain that going forward. Any other questions on this particular chart, or any guidance that you'd like to provide us with?
So wait, if you're saying we're currently operating with three kindergarten assistants, wouldn't that be three to three?
No, because it's based upon last year's budget model.
Okay.
Any other questions on that chart? Okay. I'm going to move on to the next one. All right, so this one here. This is a duffy. Let me just rotate this so that you can see this. Oops. Hold on, what did I hit? Go back. Budget presentation, there we go. View. There we go. All right, can everyone see that? And it's right side up now? All right. So, zero-based budgeting. This is not an easy feat to be able to do by any means. So literally, what we've done with the help of the administrators. Is we have looked at our instructional supplies. Nancy will tell you in more in-depth than I will. That largely in part for the past five years. Many of our instructional supplies have been paid for through commissioners' network funding. And a very, very small percentage of our instructional supplies have actually come out of the appropriated budget. Because we had grant funding that we were able to use to support that. So this is really the first year where we're looking at having to prepare to purchase instructional supplies out of the appropriated budget. Nancy, do you want to add on to that in any way?
I mean, if you go back to the projected resources sheet, you can see that in twenty-twenty-one. We had half a million dollars. That we could utilize for instruction. All of it was for instructional supplies, but there was a significant. Excuse me, a significant chunk. Year prior to that, we had a million, almost a million and a half in commissioner network funding. So, I mean, that was a big part of helping us. Get to where we needed to be as a district. And now we've got to. Make it on our own, so to speak. And that's a part of the transition process.
So what we need to do here in this particular exercise is, we want to take you through. Pearson and what will be Hinsdale. And kind of talk to you, and Barb and Rosie and Seamus, feel free to chime in and add on to this conversation. Around what we are going to be needing to support the continued programming in our various content areas.
Mel, may I add one more thing about the funding? So if you look at the supplies, and I just, I did this calculation today, so it's not on the sheet. And I'll update it for next time, if that would be helpful for you all. But when you look at the total at the bottom of the page. It's, it comes up to a pretty hefty amount, eighty-two thousand dollars plus. We, I am expecting that we'll be able to use almost seventeen thousand dollars of grants to help offset the cost of some of these things, so. This wouldn't all go into the appropriated budget, but it's more to show you. In depth, the detail of the sorts of things that are needed, and for the administrators to tell you a bit about what things are.
So just so we're clear, we're not talking about eighty-two thousand dollars of additional spending. We're talking about eighty-two thousand dollars that was previously funded with grants, that you now have to fund.
Right, so it'll be in net of about sixty-five thousand, so.
And Doug, if you were to compare it to previous years, this is way pared down from what we had been spending before when we had commissioners' network.
Where's the eighty-two thousand? I'm not seeing it.
It's the combination of the two totals between the two buildings here at the bottom.
If you had the forty-three, eight fifty, and the thirty-eight, seven hundred.
Okay.
So going into this document a little bit. Barb. Are you on here?
Yes.
All right, why don't you talk a little bit about for both Pearson and Bachelor, kind of what we would need in terms of language arts materials that are listed here, and kind of how and why we use them in that way?
Sure, so pre-K through grades three currently do foundations work? I think it's pre-K, right, Rosie? If not, K through three. Wordwork as part of their language arts curriculum. So the foundations, along with that, you have to buy consumable workbooks that go for that. And there are teacher manuals or consumable things like anchor charts that come with that program. And certain manipulatives that kids would use, so that's something that we would use for the foundations wordwork. As far as the reading workshop consumables and the readers workshop supplemental texts. Typically, Columbia University, the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project is the curriculum, is the foundation for our curriculum. And along with that, we have texts that we typically have to purchase for students to be able to read with those units of study. And other consumable things or anchor chart materials, teaching instructional supplies. Mentor texts that teachers would use to model certain skills and strategies in reading. And then the grade two kits for reading workshop. Would be something that would go along with that curriculum. There are Teachers College produces. Curricula that has all of the guides and things in some of the texts that come along with their units of study that we would need to purchase. And then, you know, just replacing some of those items from foundations is the last thing on that line. We also need notebooks for kids to use. I don't know if that's part of this, or if that would go into general instructional supplies, but typically, it's the texts.
Thanks, Barb. Does anyone have any questions on? The explanation around language arts?
Are you guys using like Post-it notes and that sort of thing?
Yes, that typically goes along with the but, general budget for instructional classroom supplies. But yes, we use tons and tons of Post-it notes, sticky notes. The kids can annotate texts as they read their independent texts. And then, you know, they'll, they'll put those Post-it notes in their books as they read, and then use them for conversations and partnerships and book clubs.
We have those listed out separately on a different sheet that you'll, you'll get to as we go through the detail tonight.
So Rosie, could I ask you to do the same for the mathematics programming?
Sure, so we use Bridges Math for our mathematics program. And along with Bridges Math also comes consumables. There's workbooks, student workbooks for in school as well as at home. There's also, I can give an example in kindergarten of a consumable is an individual number line that students actually make and create during units, and they use it in multiple units across the year. So there's those types of consumables. Just like with English Language Arts, there's also supplemental text and materials that need to be replaced year by year, or here and there. Depending on the unit. And there is a replacement kit items that are needed. Again, something that we budget for due to mostly wear and tear of items. And then we need the additional grade one kit for the additional classroom.
Any questions on the mathematics components? No? Barb, do you want to talk to the science, since that's primarily a lot for your building?
Yeah, so that, that number is quite large, but it is primarily for the grade six Open SAIAD kits. So the Bill Gates Carnegie Foundation has created a curriculum that has been absolutely phenomenal, completely aligned with 3D instructional practices of the NGSS Next Generation Science Standards. So we have initiated some of those units of study in sixth grade through when they were put out. And Rachel Manzer, who works closely with the State Department of Education, all of the science gurus there and throughout the state and in the country, you know, highly, highly. This, this Open SAIAD science has been vetted nationally and is renowned and, you know, becoming more and more popular. So we're looking to purchase a lot of that, those instructional materials that go with these Open SAIAD kits that again, are completely aligned with three-dimensional NGSS teaching. And really kind of put everything in place for us in terms of what we need for next generation science instruction. So those kits would include science materials that go along with all of the labs. We have beautiful labs at Pearson, and now, you know, in grade six, we'll be able to have a full year-long curriculum based on the Open SAIAD curriculum. So all of that is all of the instructional materials you would need to implement those units of study throughout the year.
Is this a one-time purchase there, Barb?
Yes. Some of that, well, some of that sixty-seven hundred would be consumables, so. There are, you know, some consumables that go along with that, that would need to be repurchased, but not the entire total there.
Not the ten grand that's proposed?
Yeah, no, and Nora, some of that comes from, the ten grand comes from. They only release certain units of study over a certain period of time. So they're projecting out for the next five years, like what grade level units they're releasing. So not all of them had been released before, so we've been purchasing them as they are available.
Wow.
So is this the first time then that this program is being used?
The SAIAD? Actually been using it for, I don't, but three years, I would say now, at various grade levels. Because they hadn't released all the units yet, and they're working on still releasing particular units. So this is one of the sixth grade units that was just released that we needed to purchase.
Hey, could we see one of these? I know it's not related to the budget, but could we see one of these units for the curriculum committee down the road?
Absolutely, just let me know when, and I will set that up for you.
Okay.
So Melanie, to what extent are our educational materials presented via Chromebook versus the old-fashioned textbooks?
It's limited. There's very few. That actually have like a textbook that you would think of like the old, like, you know, Saxon math books, like. They have more workbooks, if you will, now, where the kids are actually like writing in them. So they're called what we refer to as consumables in some aspects. And then a lot of the instruction is done by the teacher, modeled by the teacher, and then implemented in a more hands-on, small-group fashion. They have centers, they have workstations in the classroom, so. It's very different than what we've seen in the past. You know that our curriculum is online now, so many of our resources are right online, too. But we're not having to go out and purchase. Textbooks, you know, every ten or so years. We're having to more frequently purchase consumables.
Which I guess is good and bad. I mean, I could remember in years going by where if your math textbooks were suddenly deemed to be obsolete, you'd be looking at a fifty or a hundred thousand dollar line item just to update all your math texts. That's a good thing, but so just to follow up. The Chromebooks. To what extent do they supplement that? Are the programs loaded onto the Chromebooks and support the curriculum?
Absolutely, and we're actually gonna, I think it's the next grouping of spending materials we're going to look at. We're going to show you some of the subscriptions that we've had conversations about instructionally that we need to take a look at.
Right, thank you.
So. Barb, thank you for sharing that information on science. Rosie, do you want to talk a bit about the writing?
Sure, so writing is very similar to English Language Arts. There are consumables that go along with the units of study for writing. In the same realm, parts of the. Anchor charts. Anchor charts, again, materials that supplement the instruction for writing. They, we do traditionally see more of these materials at the younger grade levels. Along with supplemental texts that support the units. So again, those are texts that go along with the objectives and goals for the lessons. That support the writing work. A lot of it is used as a model to support writing for students and then the additional grade one classroom kit.
Does anyone have any questions on the writing?
Is there a reason that Pearson doesn't have any or is that for both and it's just?
I can, Mel, do you want me to elaborate on that?
Absolutely, please.
So through the Commissioners Network funding, we have spent a great deal of money with our writing workshop and reading workshop materials. And at this time. We're in a good place and Teachers College hasn't updated and done new units of study. So currently we have the materials, all of the mentor texts and the supplemental texts that we need.
Thank you.
So you were talking earlier about kind of some of the general supplies. So we also have line items that are built in for general supplies. So Nora, this talks about those post-it notes. It talks about kind of. Headsects, mice that kids might need, positive recognitions that we provide students. Rosie does field of flowers in her building. Bachelor is also gonna need replacement headphones and some mice calm down corner consumables. These might be squishies. They might be balls. They might be. A toy, a preference toy. We have some students that need noise cancelling headphones that are unable to handle loud noises. And then general grade level classroom supplies. That's your pencils, your pens, your notebooks, your sticky notes, all that kind of stuff. And. Pearson right now has. Less money in that particular area because they have a good stockpile right now. That we don't necessarily see the need to be able to purchase. That type of material going forward for next year. We've tried to really pre-plan when we've had some additional funds.
Yeah, I don't, this, that seems crazy. I mean, I don't, why are we? We're spending thirty on squishy balls for kids for a corner, for a calm down corner?
So, um, Seamus.
Yes, Mel.
Would you be able to talk a little bit further about the calm down corner and kind of some of the materials that students necessitate to be able to maintain some self-regulation?
Yeah, Sal, sorry. I think just in general, you know, I think they just use as an example. It's not just, you know, squishy balls and things like that, but it might be. Visual schedules that we use for students in the calm down corner. They're just manipulatives that we use across the board. So. Three hundred dollars for, for one grade level, that really is not that much. I've also built some money into my budget that I will get to as well. That will build in, that will build in for more.
Thing you did.
Say that again?
Hold on, wait, someone's not muted.
Let's talk.
Okay, sorry about that. Sorry. Not used to hearing multiple males on the call. As we usually just Doug and I and Doc. So. In general, Sal, so it's a lot of different things that we might have. So squishy balls could be an example, but you know, what we're trying to do, Sal.
What was the other thing that you had said?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah. So visual.
Visuals?
Yeah, so visual schedule. So maybe we might be using a schedule for a student to see, which will have what we call packs, which are little individual pictures that have Velcro. So. When a student who might be not as verbal as say another student, we might say, all right, here's your visual schedule. This is what you need to look at. And we might be using supplies like cardboard, Velcro. Little things like that up. It's only like five bucks here, ten bucks here. But when you think about five different grade levels of, you know, twenty classrooms in a building. It's the, the little dollar and two dollars start to add up. So it's really not that expensive. A lot of these teachers use their own money to buy a lot of these materials as well too. So it's just trying to keep kids in the classroom versus having them to leave the classroom to possibly go see a school social worker if they can't calm down or. Building principal might have to go and get the student. So it's trying to keep them in the classroom using some of those sensory type materials.
So this is a special education thing.
This is, so what Rosie has in place right now is not a special education related thing. All the classrooms at Bachelor have this calm down corner for students to access and utilize. Once again, to special education, I do have some things built into my budget that I can talk a little bit about and, and reach. And go a little bit more in depth about some of the things that we do for maybe some of our special ed students as well too.
All the classrooms up to what? Up, up to six or fifth grade have a calm down corner?
Nope. Rosie and Barb, can you talk about when, when we kind of stopped that?
Well, actually we have break boxes that we use to keep kids in the classroom. So there are students that need to be regulated and. They might have a box, three items in the upper grades as well. You know, something that they can just kind of fidget with for a minute out in the hallway, students with ADHD or students that just need to calm them down emotionally. They might, you know, have the kinetic, can, I forget. The sand, you know, that they can play with in the box and they might have some earned incentives where they have worked hard for an hour in class. And then they can take a five-minute break in the hallway and they take that box with them. So rather than having the student leave to go to a room to, you know, reset and do physical exercise, sometimes this might help just kind of. alleviate some of the, the dysregulation that they have. Again, it keeps them from being sent to the office. It keeps them in the classroom and it helps them have something to kind of. Get themselves regulated so they can get back into the classroom and work. And so those break boxes, we try to have one in every class. And, you know, we might have multiple sets of those boxes and, you know, for different students in each classroom. So that does kind of add up as well. But we do use. Similar items like that in the upper grades, all the way up into sixth grade.
But Sal, to go back and answer your question, I believe up to pre-K to two, we're using the terminology, you know, calm down corner. Third grade and above, we don't really have a space. Kids can take space anywhere in the classroom. They might need to take space, but there's a certain, a, a space in each pre-k to two classrooms that dedicated to that space for a kiddo to take. Whereas they get older, we don't really have that space. They have other strategies that they might use. That's why it focuses primarily at Bachelor, not, and not at Pearson in the budget line item there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the general classroom supplies? So we have looking at art, music, library, media and physical education. Art, we have a lot of supplies. We've left a thousand dollars in there and two thousand just to ensure that we can carry on with the. Units of study that they need. And as you know, art has a ton of consumable materials that students use on a yearly basis. Music, we're looking to add some additional band instruments and supplies for the band. Instruments, like if you're looking at purchasing a saxophone are typically like a thousand dollars a piece. So. That's just something to keep in mind. That's also an area that if we need to scale that back, we can scale that back. Routinely to keep our libraries fresh, we make sure that we continually are purchasing new and fresh, interesting books for students. So we've put two thousand dollars in the budget for the library media. Physical education at this point is not requesting any additional materials. They are fully stocked at this moment. Any questions on art, music, library or PDE?
Melanie, what about like tuning instruments, repairing instruments in the middle of the year? How does that work out?
So that comes out of that portion of the five thousand dollars. It's other, and also in our other purchased services line. They get sent out at the end of the school year and a company cleans them and tunes them for us. And then provides us with that service.
Okay, thanks.
Can we see a list of these books that we're buying? Any, somewhere?
Sure, we can provide that whenever we buy them.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any questions on that? No?
Can I just ask a quick question? I'm assuming Pearson uses the noise cancelling headphones also? In the classroom?
They do. It's really student specific. Pearson has a good supply of them at this moment.
Good. All right. Excellent.
Under interventions, we have many of the materials that we need. The only thing that we really need to do is just backfill on some consumables. And you can see that that's pretty much. Just support materials that we're backfilling at a thousand dollars a piece in each of the buildings to make sure that our kits are restocked for the start of the new school year. Any questions on that? No? And then, um, Seamus, are you there?
I am.
Could you just speak to assessments and in particular the protocols, please?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. So as part of special education assessments, we're required by law to do comprehensive evaluations when students are brought forth to special education testing. So when I came to this district, like we literally have like three or four tests that we're constantly using. We could look at a kid's IQ. Their achievement scores, maybe some social emotional, and that was about it. So. Over the past six years, I've really built up what I call our evaluation library. All right. Which basically if there's a certain concern that we think a student might have, we have an evaluation tool or an assessment that we can look at to identify. Those areas of strength and those areas of weakness. With those tools come what they call protocols and things like that. So. When we do a test on a student, we might go through, say, a hundred protocols by giving a student like a cognitive evaluation. But I might like specifically at executive functioning and student, I might only go through six of those in a year. So as we go through, I keep record of every single, every single assessment that we have in district and every single protocol we have in district. And so. When I budget, I look at how many evaluations we did this year and I do projections as how many were any next year. So by looking at it, I keep track of all those projections of regards to those protocols that we might need. And those might be bubble sheets that parents might have to fill out in regards to like attentional concerns, or it might be. A workbook that they, a teacher or an assessor has to use with the student when they're assessing them for achievement scores. So it's a variety, just of different assessment tools that we use and protocols that we use. They are needed in order to keep these assessments moving forward. I would need these assessments to complete the assessment. If I don't have them, they would not be valid and I would not be able to use those assessments on students.
So Seamus, some of this, this doesn't come out of like the grants that we get for special ed?
Yep, some of it does. And you know Nancy, I don't know if Nancy wants to speak to that. Nancy and I work hand in hand. A lot of this does come out of my grant funding. In regards to certain things like that. But there are times where, you know, certain, certain things are not grant funded. Or I've not used grant money for before that I, that we've just used in the GB budget if I needed something like that. But I try really, as you can see with the amount that's being asked, I try really strongly to keep that within my budget to kind of not have to join in, in with, in jumping into any other area.
This is also for maybe kids that you're assessing for services. So they may not have been identified yet. Is that right?
If you look at this with specific, well, I'll give you an example. When you look at this thousand dollars for this assessment right here, you see the words DECA, the acronym DECA and PELI, okay? This is our social emotional screener that we adapted last year that the State Department recommended that we get onboard for our social emotional learning. So this is a regular ed screener that we give to every single student in our district. The DECA is for the older students. And the PELI is for the littler students. So these are for given to every single student in district. We do it twice a year. So these are protocols and assessments that we need to have in order to make these assessments be accurate and us be able to use them. So really this isn't even in this situation, this is not even a special ed related protocol. I just use the protocol example as to what the protocol actually is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on the instructional supplies that we have listed here? No? Okay. So we're gonna move to page two. All right. So, um, Seamus, I know you just spoke a lot, but this is kind of your page, if you will. So if you could cover special ed OTPT, SLP and SL, SEL, please?
Absolutely. So thanks, Mel. I'll try to go as fast as possible. If anybody has any questions about one, anything, you just, please just let me know. So if you kind of take a look at some of our student support requests right there, that might be classroom libraries, reading and writing and math materials and consumable. So. That ranges from everything. You know that some of our students might not be quite at the grade level that some of our other students are on in their classrooms. So. Those might be level texts. Those might be access to audiobooks that we're using. It could be a variety of math materials and things like that. And now you get around, this is also pre-K through twelve. This is not just focusing on. Pearson and/or Hinsdale. So this is including our special education students up at Gilbert as well too. AT and technology, certain things need to be added to certain computers. We need apps to be on certain computers like word recognition software for some students based off of their IEP. Speech to text and some of those other things that might have to be updated as the years go on because. Unfortunately, apps go out of style or they need a new one, or we need something else because a student is non-communicative or something like that. As you can see, Nora, back to your question, there's that five hundred dollars of the protocols that's built into my budget right there for protocols for what we need for special ed. Again, some more classroom supplies, books and manipulatives as well. Sal, I know you just stepped out, but back to what we were talking about. Previously in district, when, when I first got here, we were really struggling with our SEL, our social emotional curriculum. And we, we, we implemented something called a reset room where. We put a lot of time and effort and research into how we can support our kids social emotionally by providing them with a specific place for them to go. The great news is that we used to have to have all of our kids go to this specific room to get their reset. But what Rosie and Barb spoke about is that we are able to now keep, I'd say eighty to ninety percent of our students in the classroom. Just using our reset boxes that Barb spoke about in their classroom versus having them leave the classroom to go and do that. So those reset room materials are all part of those reset room boxes and all that stuff that's built into keep our social emotional learning at, at a peak. Again. Pre-K through twelve. If you guys get a chance when, you know, get there to take a look at some of our reset rooms, I think you'd be really surprised as to what there actually are and what kids can do in these areas. It's, we've had at least six other districts from the state of Connecticut come and visit our reset rooms to see what they're all about. To try to implement some of the things that we're doing because it's kind of cutting edge in district. And again, we also have the Student Resource Center. Each one of our buildings has something we call our SRC. And it's our social emotional classroom. And that is also, you know, they might need consumables. Mystery motivators, you know, those types of things, timers, all that stuff. And again, those keep some of our most, I would say that are most high level need students. If students are related to our SRC program, those are students that are, are, we're doing our best to try to keep in district and not have to send them to another program outside of our district. So all of these materials right here keep our kids in district versus having to send them to a substantially separate program. Any questions in regard to those? I know I kind of speak fast, so I apologize. Good to go?
Oh, no. Do you have a number of special ed students from the K through six and then seven through twelve that you're working with, Seamus?
Total numbers?
Ballpark, I don't.
Yeah, sure. So we have about, I want to say we have about seventy-five, I would say, and that is grade seven through twelve. And then we have about, I'd say a hundred. A hundred and ten, hundred to a hundred and ten, pre-K to six. So we're ravaging right around that one seventy-five, one eighty mark. So we're right in line with the state average for, for our identification rates.
Yeah, the exact number is right now for special ed Gilbert enrollment is sixty-nine. We have a hundred and three in district. We have twenty-nine students in out of district placements and then we have twelve in charters or magnets or BoWAC.
That's pretty close. Not bad for not having my numbers in front of me. OTPT, as you can see, I'm very minimal searching here. So OT and PT, we need, sometimes we need functional seedings for some of our students with either low tolerance, muscle-built. Lesson plan materials, again, protocols around that area. And then, you know, some assessments. My OT did request a new assessment that just came out last year that she really would like to get. So that's where that five hundred dollars is for the cost of that assessment. So again, it was, it's replacing an outdated assessment that we can no longer use because the company doesn't make it anymore. Our SLPs, I've been putting a ton of resources and money into SLPs over the past couple of years. So the asks there were in pretty good shape for, for asking for, for anything in that area. The biggest thing that I'm seeing right now is the increase for assistive technology. We do have a small group of students in Miss Fields building that are currently in first grade. That areas group of students that really benefit from assistive technology and augment of communication devices, i.e. Talkers, iPads, you know, really focusing on those areas. And there's just happens to be a group in that grade. So we want to make sure that we can focus on them moving forward. And then SEL, again, it's just, you know, we run social thinking groups. We have manuals that our counselors need. And again, protocols again in those areas. So, you know, those are kind of where my numbers fall. I use a lot of big words and stuff that you guys might not know. So I'm sorry if I did, I can happily clarify anything.
Seamus reminded me what SLP stands for.
Uh, speech and language pathology. Uh, speech and language pathologists, Doug.
Yep, thank you.
Occupational therapist, OTPT is physical therapist. I figured you probably know those from medical terms as well too, so.
Go ahead, sorry.
How many student resource centers do you have in district? Is that like one?
Yeah. Great question. So we, we had one in each school, Renata, right, right before COVID happened. We had one at Bachelor and we had one at Pearson. Again, I, I don't consider our, our, our student recents or center a room. I consider it like a program, right? So wherever the need for the kid is, is where our SRC staff and our program goes. So for example, right now, we have an SRC room at Pearson that's not being utilized because we don't have student need in that building right now. So our SRC that was at Bachelor shifted up to Oak Street this year and last year to support those students because that's where the cohort of students were that really needed that support. Next year, we will have an SRC program in both Bachelor and in, I'm sorry, in Hinsdale and in Pearson. So we'll be shifting our resources around yet again, but without any additional staffing. It's just who our staff just moves with the kids' needs.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask about the OT need, Melanie? And then Seamus, you'd probably be able to address this. Is one OT for, I guess it's just for, is that doable?
Yeah, so OT has a, has a, has a large caseload, but it's a feasible case. So we, I meet with my OT and my SLP department. We meet bi-weekly. We're constantly looking at caseloads. We're constantly looking to make sure we're providing services. Mel knows that if I come to her asking for something, I really have data to back it up. I have not gone to Mel and asked for any crease in my OT right now. And I've had that conversation with my OT. If she feels that she can continue on with what we have right now, and she agrees that she can continue on with her caseload. So as of right now, you know, it is a large caseload, but it is a feasible caseload that we've had conversations around.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions on any of the special education lines?
Just real quick then for my clarification, we have an OT, that's one person. Is the PT inside the budget with personnel staff?
Individuals.
Yeah. Nancy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Nancy, I know you're on this as well too. Our PT is a contracted employee. We only have a PT that is scheduled in our district for, I want to say, two days a week. We don't have the numbers of physical therapy students that need those services in district that would need us to hire our own employee. We've been contracting with this person contractually for the last couple of years. I believe that's accurate, Nancy, correct?
Yes, it's a contractor. It's not an employee.
What would that fall under in the budget then for?
In contracted services, professional contracted services, it would be the, what's called the three hundred line professional technical services on the budget report that you get monthly?
And Sandra, the reason why I do have some PT and protocols built into the budget is that I never want to be put in the position if this person leaves that I don't have any of those resources of assessments. If that person takes them with them because they're theirs, I then don't have access to any of them. So I house our own assessments, our own protocols with us and they use our protocol. So if we were to have to get a new person, I wouldn't be reinventing the wheel coming asking for thousands of dollars trying to rebuild what I don't have anymore.
Nancy, that's under professional technical services. Is that right? That's your three hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
And about twenty, twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars of what Seamus has listed here on this sheet will be covered by grant funding. It, it will not be part of the appropriated budget.
Any other questions on the sheet? So the last couple of things we want to go over with you, and again, you know, tonight's really focused on the instructional aspect of things. Next time we meet, we'll have the rest of the pieces in there, but we wanted to really focus on instruction with you tonight to guide our development of the rest of the budget. This particular sheet goes into office supplies. So we need general office supplies in order to function as a school district. You need envelopes, you need cardstock, you need staples, copy paper, envelopes, labels, all that kind of stuff. So you can see the amounts listed by building and by special education. Are there any questions on that? No? Okay. The other piece, which is critical to our experiences that children have is that we've set up field experiences and we largely started doing this when we had Commissioners Network that would support students' alignment with their instructional units, particularly in science. And then we would take them out and do hands-on experiential field experiences to be able to further their understanding. So what we've done for you is listed the standardized experiences that we've put in the curriculum at the different grade levels, the cost that the field experience actually costs. And then following that, you can see the cost for the transportation to the various field experiences. So I can answer any questions that you have regarding field experiences or the transportation that we provide.
Is transportation enough? You know, it's, it's six hours. Are we, you know, Martell, I'm used to being charged per hour. Is this per trip? Is this one day? Is, how, how do you get?
They're a little different based upon the different field experiences. Some of them are only a couple hours. Some of them are full day. You know, some of them are different distances away. Some of them, we can use just a regular old school bus to be able to take them on. So it's different based upon where they're going, how far they're going, how many, all of that kind of stuff. But these are the costs that we're paying right now for them.
You would allow for like inflation, wouldn't you?
Oh, of course. Yes, that's planned in here. Yes.
And have any of these trips been like canceled because of COVID reasons or anything like that? Like, I mean, in the past couple of years and I know you can't kind of see what could happen, but.
We're starting to be able to have our students be able to go out and about more frequently this school year. I anticipate that next school year that we'll be fully back to regular experiences. That's my hope. Some of these field experience here during the time of COVID have moved to virtual experiences. Some of them had been canceled altogether because, you know, the particular organization had closed during that particular time. So most of them are moving in the direction of being open though, at this point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on field experiences? No. Seeing none, we're gonna move on here then. So this undertaking on the next one is all about software and licenses. We have a responsibility to be able to provide instructional support materials to staff and interventions to students. So we had taken our budget in all of the subscriptions or licensing software that we needed to be able to look at. And what we've done is we've eliminated some of the ones where, you know, there wasn't the best bang for our buck in terms of the usage and what we were getting out of it from the data perspective of student growth. And Barb, Rosie and Seamus and the coaches have had many go-arounds of looking at this particular list of subscriptions and software. Some of these help in our district-based purchases. Some of them are school-based intervention-type purchases. So looking at some of the school-based ones, I'm gonna start with Pearson because it's at the top. Barb, do you want to speak to maybe the Lexia, the Read Live, the Follett, Nuzella intervention?
Or, so these are typically what we might use for students that are reading below grade level of Alexia and the Read Lives specifically. Lexia is an online word work vocabulary and phonological instructional skills-based. So we typically have students that might have the profile of a dyslexic student that might use this to kind of beef up some of the phonological instruction that they're getting one-on-one or in small group with their, their interventionist or teacher. So students in SRBI who are struggling to decode words, struggling with vocabulary, our EL students and our special education students with print disabilities would use Lexia. And that's a very good program and it's, it's great to have students progress through phonological skills development. Read Live is another intervention for students that might be struggling with reading fluency, their reading rate, their words per minute, the, their ability to read with intonation inflection, pay attention to punctuation would practice on Read Live where they read aloud and they practice over and over again. There's also built-in comprehension vocabulary with Read Live as well. And that is an online platform with nonfiction informational texts. Follett is what we use in our library to order and keep track of all of our, like our library checkout. So that is a whole system that we use to, integrated to check out books and keep a warehouse or a database of our books and have students check out that way. Nuzella is an online informational and fictional, mostly informational text that we can use. The texts can be presented representing a variety of topics and students typically use that to research nonfiction informational topics and also learn about current events and read articles. The articles can be adjusted to match the Lexile, so you can make them easier for, you know, which would change the vocabulary to make it, it's not going to change the meaning of the text and the information presented, but it would make it more readable for students who might not be reading at grade level. So that is a resource that we use primarily for in the library and in our ELA units to supplement our nonfiction units of study into our current event information. So those are the, the literacy warehouse, uh, software that we use primarily.
Barb, on the Nuzella piece, it's thirty-five hundred dollars for the entire building, right? Regardless, math, because there's science in there as well.
Yes.
Good.
The science, the, the higher level science, we haven't purchased because of, that's more expensive. And we weren't sure that it was going to integrate with our NGSS standards. So we did not purchase the, the science that they offer. But they do have some articles in the, the generic Nuzella that we purchased.
What's your, what's your traffic on that? Like, how many teachers use it? How many students? How often?
We have every teacher using it in ELA. Some teachers more in grade levels more than others. Sixth grade tends to be a little bit more informational in their research. They do a little bit more informational research. So sixth grade uses it heavily. But definitely all of the ELA teachers use Nuzella and it's used in the library.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Rosie?
Sure. So PELI is our first one in Dibbles and that is our early literacy screeners. So those are testing students' early literacy skills and that PELI is used in preschool and Dibbles is used in K through three. Lexia, Barb already spoke to, same thing in the lower grade levels. ST Math is our visual problem-solving math program. Currently, we have an expectation that each grade level practices ST Math for one hour a week. Again, it tests their visual math school skills, so there's no sound. So it's a lot of problem-solving cognitive thinking. Second step is our social emotional curriculum that we teach on a daily basis. There is a kit and materials and books that come, but there's also a lot, an online, excuse me, component that comes with that. And in the online component, there's interactive games, videos, and also the updated lessons that Second Step comes out with. Pebblego next is a program to increase our nonfiction within our library and media program. It's an interactive program that students use particularly in kindergarten, first grade and second grade. They have units in ELA and in writing that focus particularly on research projects at different levels. And we use this a lot in, in library to get them acclimated with research, early research and nonfiction resources. Barb already spoke to the Follett program. ABLES is a special education assessment that we use in our preschool program. Seamus, I don't know if you want to expand on that a little bit. It is a requirement for incoming students.
Yeah, so it's a requirement. It's another form of an assessment to use for our pre-K students and it focuses on just everyday life skills type things as well too. So some of our students that maybe are not quite at the level of some of our other precares coming in, or maybe non-verbal, or maybe have other disability categories, like a student with autism or a student, you know, with a significant cognitive disability. This is an assessment that we can use that gives us a broader understanding of where they're at and helps us guide us in their programming. I'm out next anyway, Mel. Here, I'm mute.
Dr. Dutton has his hand raised. Dr. Dutton, do you have a question?
I do. Can, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
It looks like the program is broad enough so that there's something for everybody. And should be little need to send a student out of district to obtain a specific form of help. Is that correct? Or am I missing something here?
So.
Go ahead, Seamus.
So what I would say to that, Dr. Dutton, is that all these things that we have in place are, are trying to keep our students homegrown in our buildings in general, right? What you're seeing right here are, are, are tools that we use, but I want to be clear that Rosie and Barb know this and they're, they're amazing at following and making sure that we're using, these are not replacing instruction. These are supplemental things that we put into place after students receive quality education from their teachers. And all these programs are monitored specifically by specific people. So for example, Lexia, we look at the weekly usage of Lexia every single week and we have someone reporting on that to us and to our principals to say, what's the point of this? Are we using it? Where, what, what bang for our buck are we getting? So all these, all these tools that we have in front of you right now that we've talked about absolutely do help us keep kids in district. But they also keep us from having to, you know, to refer to special education before we even get to that type of conversation. Because they're giving this type of instruction and getting this type of intervention putting in place prior to that bigger conversation, Dr. Dutton, that you're speaking to.
Good. Thank you.
You're on mute, Mel.
Sorry, do you want to talk about the special education programs that are up next, please?
Absolutely. Again, you know, I know we talked a little bit about protocols and assessments recently. I'm not a dinosaur. I realize that the age of paper is, is fast leaving us right now. So a lot of the assessment tools that are out there now, companies are coming out with virtual or, or web-based protocol, web-based assessments that we can use. So we've actually switched to some of our more paper-heavy protocols that we needed a lot of consumables for. We've smitched, switched to a more online version. So we're using a system called Q Interactive and Q Global. That takes care of a lot of our rating scales, achievement testing and our cognitive, which are three of our largest assessments that we provide to almost all of our students. Those are like, if I said that you asked me any three assessments that we always give kids, those are three kids that we always give kids. So I'm trying to stay with the times and avoid having to continually go after protocols by looking at a more, you know, user-friendly version of that. So those are all the Q interactives that you see there. You see Lexi again under special ed. It is a costly program, so we have built that into all three of our budgets moving forward to suppress the cost of what those look like. News to you are again, is, is another version of some curriculum-based stuff that we can use with some of our students that might have lower cognitive profiles. Students with autism, things like that, that might not be quite accessing the curriculum at grade level. But it touches on a lot of the grade level standards and it's brought down to their level. So we can meet them at their level and instruct them at their level, but also making sure that we're keeping up with current events and current curriculum that's out there. So it aligns really nicely actually with, with the curriculum that we have. And again, APLES and Pro and EdMark are again, another assessment tools that we use for students with students with autism that are possibly not. students with autism that are possibly nonverbal or lower functioning students with cognitive disabilities. Um, these are programs. Um, I don't remember if some of the board members here, Rich, uh, Dr. Dutton probably remembers Doug, some of the others, Kristen. We actually had a student present to the board a couple of years ago and he used his EdMark system when he presented to the board, if any of you recall that. So again, another program that we use for our students that that need that level of support. And then frontline, the big one there, uh, sorry, that that's not me. I apologize. I'll get to that after.
Any questions for Seamus?
I have a question about the Lexia. So I I see that it's on here three times and it looks like, so there's one for Hinsdale, one for Pearson, and then there's the Lexia Core. Can you just talk a little about, um, explain the difference between the Lexia Core V and the other two Lexias? Like, is there overlap or?
There's definitely overlap, Renee. Um, again, it is, it's a costly program. So I think the total is upwards of fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars for the program for the district wide license. But on top of that, the Lexia Core V, which is different than Lexia, has Power Up, which is used for some of our older students up at grade seven through twelve, which is a vocabulary comprehension base. It's kind of takes away, goes away from the phonemic and phonological awareness and it focuses on fluency vocabulary and comprehension for some of our older students that might think that the other program is kind of, I'm going to use the word babyish or, you know, not at their left, but it's all, it's all encompassed into one.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for Seamus? No? Okay, so I'm going to go in. Nancy and I are going to team up here and go into some of the district level ones. So frontline really houses a bunch of stuff for us. So currently frontline runs special education in our district. It runs our intervention tracking system for students that are receiving intervention. ASOP is our absenteeism report tracker that we have to have. And then AppleTrack is our human resourcing of all of our employees. So that is a huge hub of the inner workings of our district at the district level. Earth Networks is part of our networking. We have Raptor Technologies, which is our badge identification system for when families check into school buildings. CoWriter is actually part of special education. And Seamus, do you want to explain CoWriter real quick?
Yes, all right. Uh, CoWriter is part of a, it's a word prediction software. So students that might be struggling getting their words and their thoughts out on paper due to dyslexia or writ or print related disability. CoWriter is a online program attached to their Chromebooks that again is a district wide license that every student can have access to as well.
Then getting into some of these, thank you, getting into some of these other licensing areas. You've got like the Google Suite in there, which handles all of our Google information and our upgraded package for having Google meetings and so on. You've got Power School, which is our student information system, and that houses everything that we do around students, communications with the state, all of our financial reporting, student reporting that goes to the state. E-Finance is our finance package, which does all of our budgeting, all of our spending, our accounting. Everything goes through E-Finance, our payroll. We have website.
Also HR, all the HR information is contained in E-Finance.
Yes, thank you. We have, um, the website, which is the Inner Sync Studio. Amplify, which is the district license for Dibbles. We have the district license for NWA, which is our assessment system. E-Rate, Nancy, can you explain a little about E-Rate and what that is?
So E-Rate is what connects us into the universal service fund funding. So on your phone bills, you will see every month when you pay them that there is a portion of monies that goes to the universal service fund. And that universal fund is to help fund education costs relating to technology. So what we do is we, if there are certain things that we know that we're going to have to buy uh, that are technology oriented, we do it through E-Rate. And then in some cases, E-Rate will pick up the whole bill. In some cases, E-Rate will pay a portion of the bill. And this money is, the five thousand dollars is to, for the administration of E-Rate, which is done by a third party administrator on our behalf. Because it's the complexity of it would require us to have a separate staff person.
We also have some other district level licenses, which is Fall It, which houses all of our booking systems for the library. Read Naturally is another resource that's a district level. We have our ST Math district level license. And then Nancy, the big ticket here one is around cybersecurity. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so what we we had to renew our cyber insurance. And for them to even for any insurance company to be willing to give us a quote. There were a minimum of things that they required. And one of them was that we have a two-step verification for people who remote in, uh, such as myself, Mel. Uh, then we also had to prove that we were educating our our staff about, the weakest link in education is email, basically. And and accessing things online, but mostly email. And so thi- this entity would do phishing, uh, testing on our staff, but also help provide education. And also some additional insurance with additional software that is put into the system. So it's a, it was a combination of things and it, the company is called CrowdStrike.
Do they provide, excuse me, insurance if we get tapped or otherwise hamstrung by threat?
No, that is done via Kerma, which is using a company called Axis. That was the best quote that we got. And that was, I want to say off the top of my head, eighty two hundred dollars to renew the cyber insurance starting in January. So, which was much less than we had expected. So we were very pleased with the things that we had put in place.
Were we able to do that with the town at all, Axis?
That this, their systems are are separate from ours.
But I mean, we couldn't contract with them, so they'd cover both systems, maybe get a better rate.
The town, uh, has not chosen to get cyber insurance yet. Uh, we do partner with them on our other insurance. Um, but the the cyber one was not one that they were pursuing at the time. And we put ours in place initially last, a year ago, December. When it first came up as as an option, because we felt it was really important to try and protect the district. And knock wood, so far it has. So, um, we, uh, you know, we, we had to continue with our renewal process and couldn't wait for the town to make up their mind. So I know that they're considering it. Uh, I assume it's in process. And if there are ways that we can put it together, because we we do everything else together insurance wise with them, um, we will.
So I have a quick question on that. So is that renewal, is that yearly then? Uh, do we pay that? Okay.
The, for the insurance, not for the, the.
For the CrowdStrike. What is that?
The CrowdStrike is an annual, yes.
Okay.
Because it's a regular service that they're providing.
And then. I'm sorry.
As as the bad guys think of more clever ways to try and hack into school districts and such. You know, they're going to keep up with it on our behalf.
Could, could, uh, crouch, cybersecurity CrowdStrike, could that be also in partnership with the town, like both of these elements?
Uh, the town might choose to get CrowdStrike, but I don't know that that would, that would change the the cost of anything. This is something that was purchased separately. It's not part of the insurance.
Melanie, would you be able to check with the town manager on these two things? Like, is a possibility to work with the town?
Yeah, Nora, I can certainly check with that. You know, as Nancy had said, right now they have not, and I don't want to get too much into their, their business. But they have not, um, gone down that road in terms of cybersecurity. So, um, we're a little bit different in the fact that because we do so much online and we do have a lot of work that needs to be protected, that is handled in that capacity. We would have a great deal to lose if, um, we were to ever be impacted.
All right, student data.
It makes sense, I think, to me, from a standpoint that we are on separate from the town. Because if they get hacked, then we won't. And if we get hacked, they won't. So that, it makes sense to make two targets instead of one. I have only one question is who makes the recommendation on like who we, like we went with CrowdStrike? Who made that recommendation to us?
It was our IT person who researched it.
Our head IT person?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
So, and and the board needs to know that, um, every time that, uh, the town manager, uh, the town finance director, myself, Mel, when she's available, uh, we all meet together with our insurance people. So I mean, it is a collaborative effort for the health liability, uh, all the different insurances that are are carried on behalf of the taxpayers of Winchester.
And 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 along the lines of of that, Gilbert, I mean, I know there are separate entity and all this other, but you know, we're talking about student data. Anyway, just thinking outside the box, do they use CrowdStrike? Do they use Access and could they and did they, I mean, they can keep same what databases, but maybe the same company and we get a better deal, just a thought.
We've, Nora, because we've had limited ability to be able to work with them in the past. Um, and some resistance in that area, I think going forward, we can certainly investigate some additional ways to be able to collaborate. We have not done that to this point, you know, in terms of this particular conversation around cybersecurity.
Yeah, you know, things like maybe even Muzella, um, because that goes to high school and Power School, because that goes on too.
But that also is district based, so we have to be really careful because Gilbert's its own district. As is WS, so in some of those areas, they won't be able to see us as an entity because we're two different organizations.
Okay.
When, when I'm administering, uh, grant monies for them, because there are some grants that we do administer some funding for them. Um, if there's something that, uh, we can do together, we do. Um, but it it's not, it's typically not huge dollars, but it's just a practice that we've done since I got here.
One more question on the CrowdStrike, if I may, um. Usually, um, with all like these suites and these, uh, programs and software you buy online, there's sometimes a like, you know, the bronze, silver and gold package. Are we on the best that there is? Are we, are we going for a deal here? Because I think it's important to, um, have, especially in this time, to have the best cybersecurity we can. It's, it happens all the time. You read about it, something happening in to do with hacking of a network. And we have a lot of people's information at stake.
I will have to get you the answer to that. I I don't.
Yeah, absolutely. If you could, you know, and I think if we, we look at it and we can spend, you know, two thousand dollars more to get so much more, I think it is worth it in this time, just if we could look at that sometime. Thank you.
Thank you for that question and we will get back to you on that. Any other questions?
I have one question, Melanie, on the E-Finance and the Power School. Number seemed kind of low. Are there, did we pay E-Finance an initial fee for purchasing their program or is that?
We did. So there was an, uh, an initial buy-in price, which we had paid um, a year and a half ago, two years ago, I want to say now. And that was a larger number. I want to say it was eighty some thousand off the top of my head, somewhere around there. And then this is the annual subscription amount to be able to continue the product.
All right, and that gives you access to, um, some resources for troubleshooting or is that all?
There is a support that comes along with that, yes. Um, we have support.
Okay, good, because I know that is an issue that, I believe Gilbert had been paying extra money for. They had some issues in Power School, it was costing them money. I was wondering if there was a support service they could be accessing. But we'll take that up if you will. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. Um, the first one is on the frontline. I know that you use that for special education and 504s, which are going to be flipping over to the new state, um, forms and their kind of system for housing that information. So do you foresee frontline that costs or that kind of going down once that system is moved over? Have you heard anything?
We're hoping. So right now the state is saying that the new IEP system will be free for districts at this moment. Um, so we're hoping, I I, I'm anticipating that happening. We're going to hope, put a placeholder in there and see what actually happens with the state coming up.
Mel, if I may, so IEP definitely will be provided to us and 504 will be provided to us within a year after IEP is rolled out. 504 will be added to it as well. Um, they are working on the RTI or the SRBI system as well too, to be part of that, of that process. But there is no, uh, there is no talk about any absent management, any talk of any, um, HR type stuff with the AppleTracks or anything else like that. So there would be, have to be some other type of entity that we would have to use. But those should come down at a cost in the near future. But I'd agree with Mel, we'll reserve the right until it's in front of us and we actually know what we're, what we're using.
Because we're also unsure of kind of the timeline right now of when that's actually going to roll out in terms of it being a product that we can use on a day to day basis.
Right. And the second question was that E-Rate, um, that five thousand dollars. So it's just, could you give me an example of that? Would that be like if we ordered like a ton of Chromebooks and then we got like a good deal for them? Is that kind of where I'm?
Nancy, can you spell that out?
Yeah, it it could be Chromebooks. It could be, um, uh, I'm I'm drawing a total blank. Is that awful? Uh, yeah.
Smart words we purchased. It's usually a lot of like infrastructure or capital, um, type work. We've had some networking costs come through there also.
So it's worth it to definitely like because you get a lot in terms of money back or discounts, I guess, for lack of a better word, right?
Right, yes. And it's actually, uh, it's something that has to be reported every year to the state. How much, uh, E-Rate money did we use to run the school system in the prior year?
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
We're in a lot of ground tonight. Thank you all very much for.
I have one question. I'm sorry. Did you find any subscriptions or programs to eliminate that were outdated that you need to use?
Absolutely.
Can you quantify that?
I can have that for you for the next time. We didn't include them on here because we took them off, but we can certainly get you a number, yes.
I I just think that'd be important for everyone to know where you are trying to find savings and how you did eliminate programs or real walking using instead of just pass.
Absolutely.
As a side, I see, sorry, that I've seen similar lists like this and it does really seem like it's kind of like pared down to really the things that, you know, I see schools using. So, you know, I mean, it looks like a pretty, a pretty good list in terms of what you were, what you were going to work on keeping and.
Yeah, it is pared down. So, and we really did try to identify what we're using frequently and across multiple grade levels, not just like one or two people using it. So we tried to work it through that way. Um, so in terms of next steps, so what our team is going to do is take your feedback from tonight. We're going to begin now to be able to insert the other, um, objects into the. We're going to begin now to be able to insert the other objects into the budget. And then when we come back to you next time, what we will have, we covered a lot of instruction tonight. So next time, we'll review the changes to the instruction as you're suggesting. And then we're going to come back to you with the other budget areas that are more structural, if you will, capital, purchased services, stuff like that, benefit salary numbers. And we'll begin to be able to lay out a potential, you know, percentage for you for our next meeting. Does anyone have any questions on process or would like to provide us any additional direction?
Would that be the twenty-fifth of January or the eighth of February?
The twenty-fifth of January, I believe, off the top of my head. Um, yes, we will have things prepared for that night.
Melanie, one more thing, like, is it possible to add a column on that, on the supply software licenses, just to kind of like have a brief description, like almost like reading or writing? Because there's so many different names on there that it's hard to differentiate what's about, what's used for evaluations or what's used for, do you know what I mean?
Yes, we can do that.
We're set. No more questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Thank you all for all your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, just don't forget, end the recording.
I'm doing that right now.